Started, so I'd like to call our meeting with the Cambridge Board of Trustees, our meeting of Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Brynig.
Here.
Franklin is excused. Blackwood.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Cracklaw.
Here.
Here. All right, if we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Lisa, what's the status of this meeting being posted?
It's posted in the upper and lower level of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Bed Bath and the Village website.
Okay, all right, I see that we do have some people in the, in the seats. This is public comment time, so would anybody like to speak? Do you have anything that you would like to share with us?
This doesn't seem to be the most popular venue of the evening here.
Well.
We'll take it for once.
All right.
Our agenda's pretty boring today.
Okay, anything else? Would you like to, yeah, you're okay? All righty, we're going to close this portion of the meeting, so we'll move on. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, discussion, if there's anything.
Hey, I paused.
You did pause, you did.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries, all right, a consent agenda. Reports, I'm going to be talking in just a moment here about Plan Commission, so let's, I'll hold off until then. So we'll move on to Library Board. Paula?
So the Library Board had a working session. We do have one item later in the agenda that we'll address, and the Library Board meeting for tomorrow is being rescheduled for the end of the month, just in anticipation of the weather.
Okay, all right, questions? Okay, moving on, Plan Commission. I attended last night's meeting. Our fellow trustee, Chuck Franklin, was performing his services with the Ospreys at the Super Bowl, so he was not able to make it, couldn't get back in time. So I attended the meeting, and there was really two items, and they were both conceptual. So they didn't have their final, you know, the building, sighting of it, you know, parking and finishes. The first one was a project that was being proposed over on Katy Court, Kenseth Way, by Mr. Coshagen, and it was moving this from mixed use to residential, wanted to put in five duplex, you know, side by sides for a condominium. And this did not get a whole lot of support, I will, from the group, and I will share with you what I have shared else before. There was somebody here representing a landowner. Until they can figure out that parking that you come out on, Kenseth Way, that is a problem. We have to get that taken care of over, I think, on 134.
Streets, not parking.
Not the parking, but the, the access to 1218.
Wait, so the, no, the, well, the person who, so Dean's on, on the Plan Commission, and Dean said that both of the things came off fairly positive, that they talked about concerns specifically about the, for their duplexes, the driveway coming off onto Kenseth Way, and then, but that the developer said, hey, that's something we could go back and rework. And so it's, so the impression that Dean got was that it was pretty positive in that it was a good discussion, good back and forth with the developer, and the developer would say, hey, yeah, we'll go back and, and see if we can redo things.
And I did speak to the developer today. He is reworking some of the things based on some of the comments, some of the conversation on the, the state will not give us another exit onto Highway 1218. We've talked to him, we reached out again last year. MSA and I had a meeting, and they said, no. Our Public Works Committee did recently vote to move forward, have MSA push the DOT on the Lagoon Drive Vineyard Expansion Road. So that would be a third exit entrance to that whole subdivision. So the developer is relooking at it. Like Mark said, both of these were conceptual. We did not expect plans for buildings or anything. They came to get a feeling, if they decide to move forward, they'd have to both come back to us for rezones, and then they would have more concrete plans. They didn't want to spend the money on the concrete plan, you know, until they knew the barometer, but I think people were supportive of the concept of the duplexes and how it would fit in in the transition from single-family, the commercial, to the apartments transition. There were the concerns about Kenseth Drive, some of the setbacks, if they could be worked differently, have a little bigger setbacks and so forth, so we'll see if they come back to us on that one.
And any other project that was bought forth, again, conceptual, over at Westgate Court, Mike Hurl has a potential investor that would like to put in, I thought that was, what, 20 apartments?
Twenty unit apartments, all good.
Yeah, and that one, again, from my perspective, the struggle there is we just got done finishing our comprehensive plan, and we put a lot of time in on that last fall, and now we're looking at moving away from it because that called for commercial, so I don't know where that's going to go.
Sorry, don't mean to interrupt. I had shared last night, the comprehensive plan was based on the current zoning as it stood. We didn't zone any properties differently during that comprehensive plan. It was zoned Business Highway that continued in the comprehensive plan, so the developer knows if he does want to move forward, he'd have to rezone that parcel, took into concern, some of the concerns that were raised, and there too, there was discussion, the sidewalks, Public Works just moved forward that, and we're working with MSA and the developer to get the sidewalks done from the old QuickTrip property to the new property across to the bike trail. So, you know, some of those concerns are being addressed by the board already. So, again, he was gonna go back, look at the concerns, and we'll see if they come back to us with rezone requests and...
Sounds like they're both in the crawling stage of the whole process right now.
Yeah, I know the one in Matt's flat, they have a offering contingent upon moving forward, so he may be moving a little faster to meet the offer timeline, but...
Those were the two big items that were talked about last evening. Okay, Public Works update.
Jay has finished his three-month rotation. Cody is now the acting superintendent. He gave me his list today, so tasks accomplished in the last couple of weeks. They have removed a broken piece of playground equipment from Westside Park, and they are unable to replace that specific piece because it's older equipment. They did refill the skating rink and resurfaced it, and I see people out there using it, so annual maintenance was done on their wood chipper, on the international plow truck. The flag out front of the Amundson Center has been replaced with reinforced stitching seasonal flag. Did a lot of restocking on ice melt, furnace filters, dog waste bags, and new hitch for the leaf vac, snow shovels, things like that, that they needed to update. Repaired John Deere snow blower attachment, put the, the new snow tires that they had just gotten on the Bobcat in preparation for the snow tomorrow. They've been working with the library. They've had some issues with their water heater, so have been working with them. They did contact the DOT to confirm the right-of-way limits on the east side of town. Permits have been submitted for the signs. Two weeks ago, we had the water main, our sewer issue up here. Expeditors did come in, and there were three root blockages, so expeditors cleaned that out. New pump pads were installed at well three, repaired, replaced inspected chlorine lines and injectors at well two. Received new water reading equipment in 1901, has installed that on the water tower. We have to work with to get a new modem and some stuff set up, the new water reading system. Vicky will be able to hit a button in the office, it will read everything off the antenna, the guys won't have to be.
Nice, that'd be great.
We were able to use some excess of the loan from well number three to help pay for this equipment. Received permission from DOT, or DOR and DNR to do that. So that's in the process of getting completed. Water tower air compressors. They did cut down some ash trees, pine tree, maple tree that was declining, cut down some stumps to ground levels so that in the summer they can do stump grinding. Tree Works is getting a quote to do, there's two trees over at well number three that they can't, we can't do ourselves, so getting quotes for that, which will be part of the well three project. Did some controlled burn on the retention ponds at 134 and Highway 1218 intersection and the one next to winery. Cody and Derek will be going in March. They just signed up for the Wisconsin Rural Water Association for their conference for continuing education. 1901 came and did the annual cross connection inspection at the DW, DPW shop. They've been working with Chad. There's been some issues with the speed board out by the elementary school. Things on their to-do list, finish up the permitting for the welcome signs. They have been in contact with the company that made the signs, so starting to work, so on the installation. Evaluating the sidewalks, compiling the priority list, again, from the Public Works Committee. Annual service of the equipment, finish it up. Continue doing some controlled burns on the retention ponds as weather permits. Working with Lee Recreation on the LBK Park layout to determine, they're going to be getting some quotes for equipment and what the preparation will be needed, that our staff will do on that site before installation. Working with the library on the water heater. Just to come up, the lighting down by the old QuickTrip, there are some bulbs out in the streetlights down there, so they're working on replacing those bulbs. Also getting some quotes to trim trees in both Veterans Park and Westside Park. The 2009 plow truck has a transmission leak that they're working on in the CV shaft on the 96 mule, and something, that's just the seat on the John Deere mower. We are, I've been working with surgeons, flooring is on order. We did talk to Public Works about painting the room before the new flooring comes in. There is some, a lot of leftover paint over at the well number three that we don't need to keep it all for over there, so we're getting some samples of the flooring. We'll see if that paint matches up. If so, they'll try to get in here, get the trim off and paint in here before the flooring comes.
Great, nice.
So, a lot of stuff going on.
All right, questions?
That was just the Public Works report?
Yep.
They've been busy.
I took out some of the everyday stuff that they do.
They're, they're busy.
I think that's the most thorough report we've ever had.
Yeah.
So, wow, okay, cool.
Lisa, there's, Veterans Park, you mentioned that they're going to do some trimming of the trees over there. Are they doing the trimming?
No, I think those are some quotes, they're bigger trees.
Okay, because there's a, there's a rare tree over there. I think it's the only one in the state. It's the one closest to the post office, and just want, might want to pay some close attention on that one.
Okay.
What kind of tree is it?
It's Asian something or other. I know, I, I didn't know anything about it until I was in Public Works and found out that this is the only, only tree in the state that's right here in our Veterans Park.
All right, thank you, Lisa, for getting that report. Now we'll go right back to you. Village Office updates.
I'll keep mine shorter. Lot of preparation for the election next Tuesday, all the notices, scheduling workers, training, the public test will be held on Thursday for that. Just completed and sent off today, the 2024 Workers' Comp Audit. Met with Dean County Stormwater Erosion Control on our contracts, what the county can do to help us. Once we get a new building inspector in, they'll sit down and meet with the building inspector as well, because I think it's, some of this stuff's been dropped a little in the transition with the building inspectors, so once somebody moves in, they'll sit down with them too, and kind of what their role is and all of that, and what the county does help us out. I have talked with Deerfield on the RFP for Building Inspection. They are interested still in going with us, so we may do the two of us. Dean County is also going to get us some names, recommendations to send that RFP out to, so. Final tax collection was done. We just sent the final exports over to Dean County, so now we're, we'll be working on the final settlements with the taxing jurisdictions, those will go out in the next week. Final year-end reports completed, state and federal government. You know, Lucy had mentioned social security, she had to do the extension. She did get her sign-in stuff, so she was able to get that off to them. A lot of just year-end maintenance stuff in the office, cleaning up files, getting rid of things that are on the destroy list now that we can get rid of and stuff, so a lot of shifting and moving and cleaning of files and so.
Okay, all right, questions for Lisa? Thanks, Lisa.
Can we go back to Public Works for a second? One thing, if you could ask the guys if they can get a quote on a street sign.
What street sign?
Yours.
Talking my street sign?
Yeah.
You mean the one that's a piece of whatever it is?
They just taped over it. It's a, what is the name of the street?
It's Center Court.
Center Court, but I think they put Center Lane or something, and they taped over it with a CT.
Yeah.
So I don't...
We'll just order a new one.
There, there are some folks that live in the Center Court area that are very perturbed about that.
Not me.
That, so.
They can contact the office, I'd be happy to talk to them, and I can...
I know, I know. I recommend that they contact you, but if you could just see what that would cost.
Yeah, it's probably $10 if we can just order one.
Unless it's the Dancing Goat one, which everybody likes to steal.
That's the whiskey thief. We double bolt it, and then we weld it, and they still figure out a way to steal it.
Take the whole sign.
Forty years ago, it was High Street that was getting stolen all the time.
Yeah, that's true.
But, you know, they just don't want their court CT represented by a tape.
We will get one ordered.
Thank you.
It's not even a real street sign.
Okay.
Now you can't speed anymore.
Okay, we're going to move on then. We're up to Treasurer's Report and Bills. Let's, there's mostly bills today, I take it.
Yep, Lucy's not here. I kind of included some of her stuff in the Village Office Updates. We have our first bill run in the amount of $57,378.92. Second bill run was $3,0669.22, for a total of $61,048.14.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $61,048.14.
I will second.
Discussion? I had two. We paid accurate appraisal, $9,240. Are we done now with reassessment here? We're...
This is the start of the new year. They, everything is assessed as of January 1st.
All right.
So they're starting 2025's work.
Okay, all right.
And that's a contract we have with them.
That is a contract, yep.
How much is that contract, do you remember? Just rough it.
I don't know, I've had...
I can ask on that later. This other one, and it's just for one penny. There's a check.
Check, silver paper. Overpayment.
By the time we send this thing out, I mean, isn't there like a...
We can, we don't have an ordinance in place. We could do an ordinance that refunds won't be given.
If it's less than a dollar.
But we don't have anything in place, so we, he overpaid a penny, we...
Until he stopped making them.
Oh, I'm a penny.
Yep.
If we want, we can draft an ordinance that, but...
How do we feel about that? What's a stamp today?
69 cents.
Yeah, so if the thing isn't a dollar, I mean, it doesn't make sense in my mind.
Can't we just send them an email, say, come and get your penny?
You, you need paperwork and a trail though, you know.
I got you.
He overpaid in the states, in the system we sent to the county, and he has, a penny is owed back to him, and we want to document that, we, you know.
I don't want to make a mountain out of this, right? This doesn't happen all that often, so...
No, no, it doesn't.
All right, thoughts, anybody?
I don't know, I think the administrative costs of putting together an ordinance and making sure it gets passed and getting it in for us submitted.
For once every couple of years.
Because in, in, in all of the time I've been on the board, the two different times I've been on the board, this is the first time something like this has happened, so I would, I would think, let's just pay the 69 cents for the stamp.
Okay, well, we're going to, it's just whether...
That's just my opinion, y'all can disagree with me.
No, I would agree with you. I think it's more of a hassle than...
It's an overpayment, there has to be a record of something refunded for somebody else's accounting books or whatever, or somebody's going to make a big thing, and then it's not even worth dealing with all that, so I would, if it never hardly comes up, I think it's a problem.
All right, those were the two items that I had.
Makes me want to overpay mine by a penny. I'll get that ordinance yet.
You know, if they underpaid it by a penny, it would be a problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not if you paid the full amount, except if you just paid the first half and were short a penny, then you would be charged interest on the whole bill.
Oh, wow.
If you're short on the first half, interest is charged on the whole tax bill.
The whole thing.
If you paid everything but the penny, then you owe the county a penny in July.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
I want to see the county come after me for its penny. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So who thought that would be the biggest discussion of the night? There you go.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Is there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Franklin, Blackwood.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Cracklaw.
Yes.
Brynig.
Yes.
McPentley.
Yes. All right, bills are paid, $61,048.14. Okay, I'm going to move on. Item 8A underneath New Business, Appointment of Matthew Gaussman to the Library Board. You want to handle this one, Paula?
Yeah, the library, when we met last week, we interviewed the two candidates for the last remaining position, and both were, would have been great to serve on the board, and the board selected Matthew, and so we would like to recommend to the, that the village approve Matthew, so, yeah.
I've met him, and I think he's a nice, a nice addition to the, to the Library Board. Okay, okay, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Matthew Gaussman to the Library Board per the recommendation of the Library Board.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, next item is a Village of Cambridge Resolution 2025-01, renaming of Spring Water Alley to Spring Water Street, I think it is.
Yeah, this was a recommendation from Public Works, kind of first step to get the alley recognized as a street, for a street road in and so forth, and eligible for grants. I did share with Samantha too, they'd be the only, the library was the only one with an address on Spring Water Alley, so I did share with her, the intent to do this, so...
I think the fact that you're keeping Spring Water part of it, I think changing it from alley to street makes us.
Yeah.
Even though the library has the address, they're still going to get their mail.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-01, renaming of Spring Water Alley to Spring Water Street.
Second, anybody?
I'll second.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All righty, now we're going to go and we're going to talk about the delay of the implementation of the room tax.
This was a recommendation from the Economic Development Committee, and I don't know if you want to take it or, you know.
Since you weren't there, I can probably take it, so Lucy was at the meeting. So the issue came up that one of the three motels had concerns that the room tax, when it was actually going to be implemented, so we put the ordinance in place, and there wasn't a process to say, hey, it starts on X date, we're collecting this, here's the process for payment, this is what you need to do to comply. There was also some concerns from that owner that, basically, that they need to set their rates in like travelocity or expediary of these sites, like a year in advance for all your pricing, and since that wasn't factored in, there was a bit of concern about that. So what Economic Development Committee is recommending is that we're delay the room tax so that we can figure out what the best process is, let the Treasurer get this set up, put it on the website, get a collection, for a date to be...
Work with the DOR, what we need to do there.
Correct, we're also going to, we've invited the in-owner into the Economic Development Committee meeting next time to just talk about the concerns. And then the other flip side of that is that the collective was expecting the room tax money, so we need to coordinate that and, and adjust that, right? So we just need to understand when that...
So we, we hadn't determined the collective was going to get that room tax money yet.
Uh, okay, was that, I thought that was part of the, am I mistaken?
I'd have to go back and look.
Let me go look in the...
I didn't think it...
The ordinance didn't name it, just...
Didn't name them.
Okay, you're right, there was a, there was a, there was a, there was a process of money, correct, you're right, but what we are saying is that we don't want them to anticipate there's money because we haven't started collecting taxes yet, so when we start collecting taxes, then there would be money, and that process could be put in place, so...
And then they could apply to the money like other...
And again, we'd have none of the paperwork processes for any of this in place, so because we got it at the end of the year, we got the ordinance improved, we just are recommending, let's delay collecting that until we can figure out when the next date would make sense. We were thinking maybe July 1st. We were thinking maybe July 1st, but we, again, we want to get some input on that. And we'll bring that recommendation.
I'll make a motion to delay the implementation of room tax.
I'll second.
Further discussion? This is money, but it's not really money, so.
We're not spending it.
We're not spending it.
It's not spending money.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to delay the implementation of a room tax. Okay, Cambridge Arts Council, Fire Fest. Paula, you wanted to have these?
Yeah, so it's, the Arts Council is getting prepared for the 2025 year with both the next couple of things on the agenda. There are three items or motions that will need to be passed for the park reservation, the temporary Class B liquor license and the street closure for Fire Fest. This year, Fire Fest is going to be June 14th and 15th. As usual, we always make sure we include the police as we're walking through and preparing for it. Our Public Works Committee, we work with, or Public Works people. We work really closely with them and they've always done a great job.
In rain.
What was it?
In rain.
In rain. That's why we moved it to June, June instead of July. Yes. So, yeah. And we, the park reservation is a long length of time from June 1st until June 22nd. And that's really to support the building of the sculpture itself. So that lower part of the park, the actual full park itself is really just the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, which includes time for setup and breakdown. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the park reservation for the Cambridge Arts Council for West Side Park from June 1st to June 22nd for the Midwest Fire Fest and the building of the sculpture.
I will second that.
Any questions on that?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that one carries next.
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary Class B liquor license for the Cambridge Art Council, June 14th and 15th, 2025, for West Side Park Fire Fest.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Street closure.
I'll take one. Everybody's looking at me, so. All right, I'll get that in front. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion for a street closure from Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street from Water Street to Allen Street, June 14th, 15th, 2025 for Fire Fest.
I will second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carry, opposed, carries. Okay, that takes care of 8D Cambridge Arts Council. Let's move on to the concert series.
Can I ask a quick question about Fire Fest?
Yep.
Do they take donations?
Oh, yes, yes.
And where would, where would they take?
The Arts Council?
Like online or?
Yeah, you can, I think online, you can contact Lori Struss. You can always, Christiane at Avid Gardner. That's always a place where you could stop if you, you know, didn't know where else and you wanted to do it to a person. Avid Gardner at, Christiane would.
Okay.
Would accept those donations for the Arts Council as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now moving into the concert, do you want to take these three? I think there's going to be a.
Yeah, so there's three on this one too. Again, the park reservation, these are held at Veterans Park. The biggest reason they're held at Veterans Park every year is because that is handicap accessible. And so that makes it a good place. It also, I think, really helps to use that park. And, and I just love seeing people at the top end of Main Street instead of just at the bottom, so. And so concerts will be June 6th, the 20th, July 11th and 18th, and then August 8th will end that concert series. So we'll be looking to reserve the park those dates. Then we're also going to be requesting the placement of the porta potties at West Side Park. And just like last year, where we placed them for a length of time. The cost to place them for the entire length of time is like equal to the cost of like two placements. And the other advantage of that is while people are down and other events are happening downtown Cambridge, because like Art on Main that happened last year, they were able to take advantage of using those porta potties as well. And so using those, we're looking to do that again this year.
They come in handy when you run around the lake too.
There you go. For all respect to that. There we are. And then the street use permit, just allowing us to close North Street between Spring Street and Water Streets while those concerts are going on. It, it saves the grass and the lawn by having the stage parked on the street instead of on the grass. So I will start out by, you want, did you want to start this?
No, 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 please.
Okay, I will start out by making a motion to approve the park reservation for the Arts Council for Veterans Park on dates noted.
I'll second.
All right. We've seen it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. All right. I would, I'm going to just clarify this because on item two, it says the Cambridge Arts Council for placement of the porta potties at West Side. I think this is supposed to be Veterans Park.
Yep.
Now, speaking of that, I did last year, a local business was wondering, and there's nowhere else to go with the porta potty. I mean, it's, it's really, that's the best location right up there in the corner. And there was some, just, just concerns that were relayed to me. So I, I understand it. And that, we didn't have any complaints about.
Nobody ever complained to me about the placement or the porta potties.
Okay.
The office never received any complaints.
They, they come out and they.
They clean it once a week.
Okay.
Yep.
And there was no odor or anything like that?
No, I never received a complaint.
All right. I walked around and I, I didn't sense anything either, so, okay. All right, so with that one correction, the Veterans Park, somebody want to take that one?
I'll make a motion to request the, from the Cambridge Art, to request the Cambridge Art Council placement of portable restrooms at Veterans Park, May 22nd through August 8th, 2025.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. And then we get to the third one.
I'll make a motion to allow the street use permit to the Cambridge Art Council for the summer concert series on the dates represented there.
I'll second.
And that's including the closure of North Street between Spring Street and Park Street.
All right, I'm down as second on this, so we all get, we're on here. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Good luck to the Cambridge Arts Council for a rain-free Fire Fest and a bunch of great concerts.
Lisa Chat had no issues with any of these dates or anything like that?
No, and he'll meet with Lori, they walk through the sites and.
All right. Okay, moving on. Item 9B, since we've already covered 9A, fire and EMS commission update. And we have the first quarter invoice. How much are we talking about on this one exactly?
The first quarter invoice is $62,770 and 4 cents. And I will make a motion to pay the first quarter invoice set amount.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think it's worth noting that this is the, Lisa, if you can help me with what the verbiage was in the initial invoicing, saying that this is the invoice from what we were charged in 2023.
Carryover from 2023, the same amount. And they did say a revised amount would be given once the final budget is passed.
Okay, all right.
So the remainder of the invoices will be, should be, hopefully will be based on the new budget.
I thought the last meeting we went to, since we're still talking about fire and EMS commission, I thought it was very fruitful. Very seldom you leave meetings feeling like it was somewhat successful. I felt, felt it was very successful leaving there. Thought we came together as a group to figure out where we're going forward and we're allowing both parties to, to give us a deliverable. And that's where we stand right now, so.
And March 6th, this one day this room was available, so we put it in to meet your March 6th.
Yeah, I, I, sorry. I was just going to say, I feel like based on, I mean, my yes vote is, is a lot easier today based on our last meeting with the full municipalities. I thought it was overall a positive direction versus all to be moving.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the $62,770 and 4 cents. Roll call, please.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Cracklaw.
Yes.
Brian Egg.
Yes.
Franklin, McNally.
Yes. Okay, now there were some additional materials, Lisa, that you sent out.
Yes, at the meeting, it was requested. Sheila had said she would give her documents from budget comparisons and so forth. So she sent those to me yesterday. I did forward those to all municipalities, not just our board. She did make note when I talked to her. She didn't have confirmation of like the social security and Medicare. It was based on what information she had. She wasn't sure if it was rolled into the payroll or so. It was the best information she had on, on those.
There was a shortfall, but I don't want to get into that if that hasn't been discussed.
I didn't even have a chance to look at it or, I mean, it was so everyone could work on the budget.
All right, so it looks like we're going to be doing that on March 6th then. At least we'll have two numbers for, for the EMS. Okay. Anything else, Chris? Okay. Any questions for Chris?
Is there another commission meeting planned at all?
No. I don't believe so.
I have not seen it.
I have not seen anything and I haven't heard anything from Dave. I, the only thing that I've heard is there may be a, another meeting with, now it would, instead of Sheila, it would be myself with Dave to talk with the lawyers on the DWD complaints. I'm not, that was pushed off and I'm just kind of holding off on when another date will be for that, if, if even.
Okay, moving on. Correspondence, I don't see anything, nothing, I'm.
Oh, did you get your retraction taken care of?
You know what? I, I haven't seen it. I don't get that either, but I, I did ask and I talked right away with the author or the writer of that, and I will ask. He was supposed to send that to me. So I will ask that I get that. Okay. Moving to item 11, bike trail invoices.
Yeah, that's on our to-do list.
Okay, anything else?
So another thing to add to the to-do list would be getting the list of all the contracts we currently have that were financially, you know, from that, so from an audit and finance committee perspective, that was one of the things that I wanted to take a look at after we got our new treasurer in place, was having a single source where we can look at all of our contracts, when they start, when they end, what the costs are, what maybe the terms for renewal are, so we can have a better understanding of where we're sitting with those types of things.
Yeah, that'd be, that would be really helpful come audit, or come budget time, knowing the ones that, that are automatic, you know, the, the ones that.
The ones that, well, this is what we have to.
We have to pay, we're obligated to pay this.
We can't make changes on this particular item, yep.
And it might be italicized or something, you know, that we can, there's no wiggle room. There's no shaving off of this one because it's already contractually.
Yep, that would be helpful. Okay.
All right. Anything else at this time? All right. Upcoming meetings, February 12th is the library board.
Nope, that one's rescheduled.
It'll end in a month.
Okay. Let's see, 18th is Water and Sewer along with our primary election. And February 25th is the village board.
So is the Water and Sewer will be in the.
It's going to be in the.
Senior room? Okay, great. And of course, Brian won't be there because for some reason he thinks sitting on a beach in Florida would be more fun than coming to a Water and Sewer meeting.
Wait, what?
Wow, it was an excused absence, I hope it was accepted.
You are so nice about it.
All good. I'm just incredibly jealous.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, that takes us right up to item number 13.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're finished for the evening.
Dang.
Secret?